Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2019 Board Workshop. If you please stand for a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We just would like to make a quick announcement, if you would please. If you haven't already, please put your phone on silence or mute as we get into this meeting. I have no cards for public input, so we'll move on to item 3.01.
Today's workshop actually was designated as a special meeting because we do have one item to which you do need to take action, and that is the agreement for contracted services with ICU. This is a security firm that's going to provide school security for our two live-stream sites, both in Leesburg and Eustis. So I'm asking approval for that contract for -- it's a temporary contract to get us through the next several months until the next class of guardians graduate.
All right, Board. You've heard Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved with comment.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and second with comment at this time. Mr. Mathias?
It was my understanding, I didn't see it in the agreement, that it was going to be law enforcement or military.
And that is correct, and I know that that was one of the items that Mr. Johnson referred back to, and I know that that was in that agreement, because that was one of the things that you had changed in there, to ensure that the individuals hired would be former military or former law enforcement. That was a--
Just one second, Kristi said it is here, so just a second. But I didn't have the exhibit in the board docs.
Exhibit A.
Yeah, Exhibit A. Okay, thanks. Exhibit's one of the board docs.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed same time? Motion carries. On to 3.02 Medicaid billing update. Ms. Neeld?
Good morning, Superintendent Carnegie, Board Chair and Board members. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you a story about one year's progress. In your packet today, I've provided you with a number of materials. The first is a timeline, which I'm going to talk to you about, provider services summary for the calendar year of January to December 2018, your Medicaid-certified school match reimbursement history from 2009 to 2018, and the school district admin claiming reimbursement history for 2015 and 2016, and a copy of this PowerPoint. So I'd like to say, first of all, because of the foresight of our superintendent dedicating a person to manage a program full-time, we've made progress this year that other districts may get in three years. First of all, I want you to understand that Medicaid has two parts, and our district has participated in both parts since 1998, but only minimally in the Medicaid-certified school match part. And I'll show you some data about that in a few minutes. We are making great strides in even advancing our admin claiming side because of the participation increase in our Medicaid-certified match side. Medicaid-certified match is a program that is all about direct services with students, and we have providers in our school district that have always been capable of billing for Medicaid, but our district has opted not to participate in that. So I want to show you how we have begun three-phase implementation, of which we are currently completing Phase Two. So let me see if I can operate this and start. Let's see if it goes. Am I pushing the wrong button? Right. So our implementation timeline began, actually, in November because we -- I was designated to begin this program and also because we partnered with the Civic Solutions Group for billing. Our providers in the district are documenting services. We contract with a company that takes their documentation and interprets it into billable services. In January, we started training a small group so that we could get it right. A small group were OTPTs, of which there are 17 people. These people are appropriately certified, credibly certified for Medicaid billing. And so we trained them, and they began inputting their data so that we could start seeing some income and revenue from that group. In February, we trained the school psychologists as well as the nurses, and we began transportation just at the Lake Hills School. In June, we started with the speech pathologist. And I do want to go back for just a minute and say that between February and June, knowing the requirements that were involved with Medicaid documentation, we had to do some aligning of the way we do our IEPs so that new groups could come onboard, like the speech-language pathologist. So in June, we trained speech-language pathologists, and we also took a small group of them to begin practicing billing and documenting services through our ESE, our Extended School Year Summer Program. In September, we added all SLPs and all our behavior services, which at that time were the BCBAs, most of whom were contracted people. In November, we added in the mental health therapists, and you see the last bullet up there is the last implementation, which will occur in August of next year, with our social workers, guidance counselors, getting trained. This slide shows you the number of providers and the percentage of the total number. Total number of providers is 137, who are inputting data documenting services so that they can be interpreted for billing and we can receive reimbursement. Before we could get started with Medicaid billing full stream, we had to realize that there were three factors that are required to be in place, and that our district, in order to accept more reimbursement, had to be sure that we identified our ESE population correctly, excluding the gifted students, that the company takes the ESE population and interprets which ones of those students are Medicaid-eligible. That's not something we do within the district because of confidentiality involved. And then the third one is the parent consent. Parent consent is actually something that's always been required to be in paperwork with our IEPs for our staffings. However, because we haven't been collecting, that's not always been a form that was completed. Getting it into Skyward was a huge push, so we had to develop some incentives and encourage our -- train and encourage our ESE school specialists how to get the parent consent form and then record it in Skyward so that the company could see. Medicaid billing will not be reimbursed unless those three things are in order. So, back when we started in January, we started with 5% of our ESE population having parent consent, and with all the incentives and pushes that we've had, right now, we're at 80% of our students have a parent consent on file. And again, if they don't have that parent consent, we can't collect a dime. The 2018 school year, from August to December, most services were documented. We had a lot of procedures to get in place and a lot of training to take place. But from January to June, just for the OTPT, nurses and school psychologists, 17,196 services were documented, and dollars began to flow. For the 2019 school year, from August to December, the same time period, you can see that we grew from the 17,000 to 90,000, to 231 services. Quite a large group was added. That was the SLPs, the BCBAs, the mental health therapists. All of that goes together to feed into transportation. Transportation is only paid when services are reimbursed. It's an add-on. It's like getting 20 cents for every dollar just because you gave the dollar service. What I want you to see is the number of providers in each area that are currently providing for the district, and the number of students that they roster to document services for. The reason this is important is because by beginning Medicaid, we've added a new layer of accountability, and that is the documentation of services. Max Capture is that documentation tool. Provider data is readily available as soon as it's entered into the program. Providers have said that it's helped them organize their schedules. They have access to detailed reports and summary reports and student detail reports. And of course, all of that documentation leads to reimbursable Medicaid dollars coming into the district. Each month, I provide a report to both the Director of ESE and the Director of Student Services so that they can see how many services and how many minutes of service are provided to the district. So in 2018, from January to December, Lake County school providers accounted for 2.3 million minutes of services to our ESE students. You can see that 1.9 million minutes were by therapy groups, 1.5 million minutes were by SLPs, and .4 were by the OTPTs. Each month, when we received checks from DXC Technologies, we received four different kinds of checks: a check for therapists, a check for behavioral services, a check for nursing, and a check for transportation. As those therapy checks come in, the dollars that are accounted for are 82% by the OTPT and SLPs. In the previous eight years combined, reimbursements amounted to only $410, but in the first 11 months of our Certified School Match implementation, reimbursements amount to $128,548.51. As the state and Glass tells me, and as the company we contract with, SSG, tells me, we're three years ahead of what most districts are in implementing a program like this. This slide shows you the total amount of checks for those four areas that have come in that 11-month period, with the majority of it again. Research across the district says that 85% of your Medicaid income is going to be through the therapy groups, OTPT and SLP. And what we have to bear in mind is that there's a 60-day lapse in reimbursement. So what is received as a check in November was actually services provided in September. And you can see that the November check was almost $40,000. The December reimbursement for the October services was $24,000. And I'm sure you thought, wait a minute, October was a longer month. Why was it less money? Remember, we've been working towards getting those parent consent forms, and so in November, when we got the check for September, we had gotten quite a few more parent consents, and they were able to go back. The company's able to back-bill as far as a year in arrears. A bill can hold for a year, and a student may then become Medicaid-eligible, and then they can run it again, and we could get reimbursed. So the thing I want you to know is that in December, the amount of minutes of services I can provide you, but we won't get reimbursed for that until February. I do want to share a testimony with you because of the training and support of Medicaid, using Max Capture, documenting my services is easy, quick, and reports look so good. This was actually said by one of our employees, one of our service providers. It has added additional work to their workload, but the time that it takes is far less time than if they were doing it all themselves. Again, it's a documentation tool. We've been able to align with our IEPs and services so they're not duplicating the kinds of information that they're documenting, and they're able to pull reports to submit for parent conferencing and for IEPs. My last slide is Phase Three. Beginning shortly, we're going to be moving into a period where we're adding and upgrading and incorporating more behavioral services, planned care of developments, and intensifying particularly our transportation rate. As you know, Lake County is a huge geographical district. The amount of money that is paid for transportation is pennies on the dollar. However, Lake County qualifies to be up to almost 300% of what we are currently able to draw in, so we're holding off on submitting a lot of the transportation billing until we can get approval for that increased rate, they call it, because of our large geographical area. I'd like to thank you for this time to present, and if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well done. Yes.
My goodness, that's quite significant. Good move. So, one question, though. So what's keeping us from being able to capture the rest of the parent consent? What's your biggest hurdle in trying to do that?
Good morning. I'm Melissa Lyford. I'm the administrative coordinator for ESE at Exceptional Student Education. With parent consents, there are a lot of factors that go into whether or not a parent we obtain consent. Some of that has to do with the parent themselves. So what we do is we send the notice home multiple times to try to get a response from the parent. If we don't receive a response, then we obviously don't have consent. Sometimes the parents say no, and they don't give their consent for reimbursement of those services. So there are a number of factors. We're continuing to work on that. Ms. Neeld has done a great job with coming to the ESE school specialist meetings, providing incentives for people who are getting those consents signed. She monitors that very closely on a regular basis, and so we're continuing to work on that. But there will -- I don't know that 100% would be reached because some parents are not going to give their consent, and some parents aren't going to respond to the request for a signed document with a yes or a no.
One of the concerns parents may have about giving consent is that they receive private services, and it will impact their allowable services with Medicaid. One of the things about educational Medicaid that parents don't know is that it never impacts. So if you have a $5,000 allowable services in your private Medicaid to get your child's speech-language services privately, when you cap out that $5,000, you're going to have to pay for it out of pocket, and parents know they can't do that. They're afraid that the services the school provides will impact that balance, and it doesn't. It doesn't, and we guarantee it in two ways. One is that the law says educational Medicaid won't impact private Medicaid. The other is that our company waits 30 days before they submit for billing, so that if a student receives two services, private speech therapy today and school speech therapy today, private billers bill instantly. They call it the race to pay. We hold out for 30 days to make sure they've gotten paid, so that there's never any confusion.
Do we go out to the home or whatever sometimes to try to get the signature or the approval?
For the consent for Medicaid, we often will involve our social workers for other documents when we need signatures from parents. I don't think that's a strategy that we've used for this particular document, but that may certainly be an option.
The reason I say that is because sometimes, just like all the other students, the information never reaches the parent. So that way, we have rest assured that it did reach them, and they're aware. And also, maybe it gives, what you were just talking about, that we could open up their understanding that this does not affect them and give them more of a better settled feeling that this is not going to impact them.
This summer, I did send some individual letters to parents of students that were in ESE who didn't have the parent consent forms. I sent some individual letters and had my phone number in it so they could call, and that did resolve a lot of the issues. So we could move in that direction for the last few that are remaining.
You approach them all when they come in for an IEP meeting, right?
Yes. It's just one of the papers that they sign in. It's been that way for many years. Because we haven't focused on Medicaid for years, it in some instances didn't get signed.
Sure.
But I think this is outstanding, what you presented this morning, showing what has been accomplished so far.
Thank you.
Superintendent, I -- thank you for that. Well, your foresight insight, it led to all this, so we're able to recap some of the losses that we haven't been able to do in years past.
I will tell a quick story.
Go ahead.
Superintendent, that I went -- I attended a meeting with all the joint social services for our kids, and they were saying how we were leaving money on the table by not using the Medicaid. So I run back over to the district office, and the superintendent was already all over it. So, well done.
Other districts of our size typically collect $800,000 a year in this area, and we see that happening with the size district that we have and the services that we have. With that and the admin claiming already starting to increase because the number of services and oversight, we see good revenue for the district.
Which we plan to do what with?
It's general fund money. That's not my issue. I don't spend it, I just put it in.
So I would like to talk a little bit about that. First, I want to thank you. Ms. Neeld didn't know anything about Medicaid when I approached her and said, "This is certainly a priority and is a benefit financially," but more importantly, the purpose of Medicaid is to generate a revenue stream, to put dollars back into these programs.
Right.
And I know you all got an email recently from one of our speech and language folks, and that's an area that I know that we've talked about, that we have a hard time. It's a hard-to-fill position because people can get paid -- get a higher salary through some contracted services, and you've seen our contracted services and know that we pay a lot for outside speech and language services. And so one of our hopes and conversations that we did have recently was when we were at the negotiating table, saying that once we kind of had an idea of the funds that would be generated, we got far enough down the road, we want to come back and want to talk about compensation for speech and language and these folks that are giving additional time and to provide these services. But, so I know that that is something we're getting ready to do, is to go back and have that conversation. So the idea is either that the monies go back into the program, if that's in the form of additional compensation, if it's in the form of additional employees, so that we're not having to do as much with contracted services, if we can recruit through higher compensation, then we know that we can get more employees of our own, and that would reduce our contracted services. And so that's our hope, is that we can certainly look at that as an option. This $128,000 is just scratching the surface, really, because keep in mind, we're not fully at -- we still have another year to go before everyone is trained and everyone is billing. So, but I think that where we are right now is tremendous, and so we're ready to have some conversations about what do we do with these dollars, and of course, that will have to come back to you all, once we've had some conversation with LCEA about where we want to go with that. So that's coming very, very soon, now that we kind of have an idea of what we're generating.
Can you speak to, like you said, we expected the most amount of money to be accumulated from therapies. Why is nursing so low, given the qualifications and the -- I mean, it's a high level of service in some cases?
It is. I can give you two reasons. And the first is that while there are all kinds of documents on hand regarding medical management plans and personal emergency plans in student services, those students are not always ESE students, and they're not always noted in the IEP. So that's something that we've had to develop a plan of care for student -- let's see, nursing input for student IEP, so that the nurses have signed something saying what they're doing and saying that there is a plan in the IEP. We can't collect unless it's cited in the IEP and an additional form.
So is it more often in a 504? Is that the sort of confusion? I don't know if confusions are what--
Perhaps, other health impaired. Quite often in a IEP, it will say that the parent didn't express any concerns, that the student has other health impairments, but it doesn't say what they are. And we've kept those two areas separate up until Medicaid. Medicaid requires it. So when we first started with Medicaid and trained, it was required that LPNs be approved and supervised by RNs. So our district nurses were having to look at every single service that an LPN, a school nurse, would put in. And we were able to, through some legislation and the way it's read for the state, change that so that LPNs are able to approve their own, and the district nurses weren't needed. Well, then, when this school year started, the organization of school nurses and district nurses changed so that the nurses are district-level now, and so they're not involved as much in the way that Medicaid requires. That will change for next year, and we're looking towards how we're going to implement that change so that they can bring in more. And you're right, it is a very specialized service, and it does bring good revenue to the district, once we have all the paperwork aligned.
And to add to that, just for further clarification, we provide a lot of nursing services in the district. But as Ms. Neeld said, the student has to be eligible for exceptional student education, and it has to be a medical condition that needs to be addressed in the individual education plan, and the parent has to give consent for us to bill Medicaid. So there are lots of layers to that, so I think that's one of the reasons you see fewer nursing services, because of all those different things that have to occur before we can submit documentation for reimbursement.
Is this the only program that's available? Because if kids are in poverty, it seems to me that Medicaid services are available, hence the nursing component. I mean, it seems like maybe we're talking about a program. Is there not another one that would deal with--
No, this is the program.
This is the only one?
Our district has not entered into a step where our social workers are more involved in making sure that students who could be eligible have the paperwork filled out. And it is one of the things that the state has said to us. We have an unusually low number of Medicaid-eligible students in this district, and we shouldn't, according to other data that's available. One of the things that's been -- there have been several reasons for that, but we intend, after February, March, working with the social workers, to train them how they can encourage parents and grandparents to sign children up for Medicaid.
Keep in mind, these are areas in which our referendum dollars will help to generate more nurses, more social workers, and that will help tremendously because we're stretched very thin in these positions right now.
That would help cut the case load down?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Because that was in that email, that was something to concern.
Yes, yes. All of this coming together, I think, will certainly increase services, increase funding, and the quality of services through additional employees to meet these needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to say something also, Ms. Neeld. I've known her for quite a few years, and the comment you made, she's always given 100% to the district, and if she doesn't know something, she researches it and finds out all the information she has available to her, and I appreciate that. Your dedication.
Within a few weeks, the research that she had done and everything that she brought to the table was just tremendous, and so I, again, I thank you. And it's Lyford and everyone who's been alongside you supporting this, because this was all very, very new. And if you sit here and listen to her talk, she seems like she's been doing this forever.
Thank you. Thank you.
She's a good sales lady.
All right. Thank you. Moving on now to 3.03, the teacher retention presentation. Mr. Fonswerf, Chief of Staff.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you guys and share with you some really good information. really good information about our district in regards to teacher retention. Of course, this doesn't come solely on my work to presenting you guys. We also have our instructional recruitment partner, Kiana Peterson, and, and B J Gamez, and our H R director, Ms. Hoppenstedt. She's out doing, dealing with the family illness, and, and working in conjunction with Ms. Cockroft's team and just all the folks in H R. They, they worked to really put together good, solid data in, in this presentation, so I, I appreciate that. Please consider them, that they've, they've done a good job preparing us here. You know, and, and employees are not just numbers in our H R department. I think there might have been times in the past where it kind of felt that way, because we're a very transactional department. But we're, we're really taking the initiative to make sure that we're paying attention to what those numbers mean and really inspecting on, on how that affects the rest of our district. The, you know, the purpose of today's spotlight on retention is because we all own it. A lot of times, we, we tend to think, okay, well, H R has its data, so is, if, if they're processing people in and out, maybe it's there, it's on them, or it's directly at the schools, or is that somewhere else floating around at different district levels? When the case is, we, we truly all own retention for our district, for teachers, and I think it's important, and you'll hear me reference back to that throughout our presentation, because each department has to consider their impact, and, and we have to really pay attention to how we can have a positive impact on retention in every interaction, whether it's when the, within the system on a daily basis or outside the system, you know, with sometimes, some sort of, you know, perhaps a evangelical mindset towards Lake County schools. How do we, how do we recruit them in and keep them here and spread goodwill about our district? But keep in mind, the closer you get to the teacher, the higher amount of impact you can have on teacher retention. So, that's being said, we'll move forward. We're going to go to the third slide first, okay? Because this gives an overall three-year comparison, you know, as well as I do. Data don't mean a whole lot if you're just looking at it in a single year. If, if you look at a three, even four-year comparison, we've stayed fairly steady on our retention rate district-wide. You do see some dip there in the, the first batch there of columns is all teachers, where, you know, we've seen it go from eighty-six down to eighty-four, move around. One thing we started tracking more since, over the last year and a half, two years, is what, what are we doing with highly effective teachers? And the good news there in those second columns is that we're holding on to a, to a large portion of our highly effective teachers. And then, lastly, you see some of the effective numbers have gone down, but also, keep in mind, we've moved because of increased performance and increased skills by our teachers. A lot of those have shifted into a highly effective category also. So, that, that's three years of data. So, it, it's very similar. So, that's why we're, we're going to focus on our retention data on that first slide for last year, was seventeen, eighteen-year, and I know it's very difficult to see from, from there. So, I, I've got it broken down, and I'll do some explanation for folks that are joining in with us also. And, and also, keep in mind, as we're looking at this, across the district, from region to region, you're looking at an eight to ten percent transfer rate within, within the district. So, they wouldn't be represented necessarily on a separation on this chart, but when you, when you grind down the individual schools, we have data that's broken down to show, okay, well, this is where their turnover retention was, but this is what percentage it was were transfers within the district to other schools. So, looking, looking at this chart, we'll, we'll dig into our retention and our separation. These are also available on the website under recruitment and retention. We, we've had years, all the way back to two thousand and ten and two thousand nine, ten-year, you can kind of see the evolution of how we've monitored this data, and we, we've even evolved even further this summer in that where it used to be, it, you'd see four quarters, and it will build up to the last year's report, and that was kind of awkward, and it wasn't really helpful. So, now, each time we post a quarter, it's year-to-date, so we can kind of track ourselves through the year. And then, so, after a quarter finishes, it's usually got a month to a month-and-a-half lag time before we have that data up and available. And then, when we close out the year, it's a much greater amount of time into the fall because some of the folks that might have thought they were separating found, either transferred or rehired or found a new spot in one of our Lake County schools. So, just keep that in mind. Retention you see was at an eighty-four point six-six percent. That's out of twenty-nine hundred eighty active teachers with four hundred and fifty-seven That, we're probably this year up to about the three thousand mark with teachers currently. We've kind of hovered below and above, and with a reduction of allocations from last year, it's probably would be why we've, we've come below active teachers a little bit from where the hard work that Ms. Wyszkoff and her team, along working with the principals, have done to, to tighten down allocations a bit. So, as we look at the different parts of this pie chart, it's the different reasons for separation, and we'll start kind of in that dark green area, twelve o'clock-ish area, and we'll work our way around clockwise, looking at the categories on the ones that are statistically significant. The first one is employment in education in Florida. That's the big question that, that we have a lot of times. You know, if, if they're, are they leaving us for other people? Because nothing hurts worse than that, right? So, we, and when they are, where are they going? So, we began tracking this data last summer and through employment verifications from other districts. So, that, it's pretty easy to figure out where they're going because they want to get credit for their work history, so we, we've tracked those out. So, you know, there's always theories of, of where they're headed, so this is, this data kind of, it, it breaks away from this pie chart, what I'm fixing to, what I'm about to tell you. I'm sorry, my fixing is my Bradford County. I apologize. What I'm about to tell you. Out of the hundred and eleven that, that we've tracked, because they could have come from a non-reappointment category on this or different categories, but the thirty-one went to non-Florida public schools, which is interesting, because that could mean that, okay, are they going out of state to work? Or perhaps, are they going to charter schools to work? So, we, we don't know. So, that's, that's a category that's big and represents a pretty decent number that we've got to dig further into and see how that, that's going. The one that everybody would likely guess is Orange County. That, that's our leader, behind the non-Florida public schools by one. There's thirty of them, went to Orange County. And then, it goes down from there to cover twenty different districts that they could have gone to. So, obviously, some life changes and some reasoning from, all the way from Leon County and Tallahassee down to South Florida. But eight to Marion, seven to Polk, six to Sumter, five to Seminole, and then every other one's become less statistically significant from there. But overall, twenty. All right, if we move over to the next section that is employment in education out of Florida on the pie chart, those are our movers. A lot of times, those are out, out of our control, so I won't waste a whole bunch of time on that, but we are paying attention to why they are moving. And, and some of that might, you know, be with spouses getting other jobs and things like that. The next one is employment outside of ed. That could spike. It's no secret that in a, in a good economy, sometimes the school system suffers. Folks go to find other jobs that might be higher paying, higher paying in other industries. So, we've got to keep an eye out for spikes in that area as, as we move forward of the economy continues to improve. But, you know, there were twenty-four of those, so we've really got to focus on, though, how do we keep them in? You know, what, what's so great about working within education? And that's being ambassadors for our industry. I think we've got to do a better job of that. Non-reappointment, this is a big area, and, and you see it fluctuate up and down through the years, and it's definitely an area of focus that, that we need to keep an eye on. But it, ways that, you know, we're looking at that is more support to admin through the transformation team and, and to coach them up and, and build stronger faculties and, and taking a regional approach to support. And I think you'll see some of the positive impacts that that team has made in that you're getting, you're getting just closer and closer to those teachers by providing that regional support and also through Ms. Cockroft's team, which is another leg, that, you know, how are we addressing them closer and closer to the teacher? A certain percentage is always going to exist there, but we've got to work hard to try and lower those. And, and, but we do expect to see less of those in the future. You know, we're, we're in the middle of a, a teacher shortage. That, that's obvious. That's, it's nationwide, statewide, and district-wide. So, you know, we've got to be on the forefront of that if we're all in the same boat. How, how do we get the best seat in the boat to make sure that we're impacted less than others across the state of Florida? And one, one thing in this also that's been kind of hot button that, that went up to Tallahassee in the non-reappointments, were how many was it due to certification? Because we, we've heard a lot of that in the, in the press about general knowledge exams and different certification exams and things lapsing. So, we're, that, Ms. Cockroft will get a little bit into that because she's doing some support with her team to support folks that are having trouble with that general knowledge test, and we're looking at, we're working with, with U C F and, and teams of people to say, how can we impact those tests earlier? How can we provide support? Because the cost of those tests has also, also gone up. So, overall, we're looking at probably about seventeen to twenty percent. They gave me a pretty big window on the data on that one, because we're still trying to drill down on it. But it landed in the middle, around twenty percent of the non-reappointments in the past year were due to some type of certification issue. So, that's a really good area that we're drilling down on to try and reduce those non-reappointments. Then, we have what's likely considered to be the mystery category, personal, and that's difficult, because it, if it's personal, it likely falls into some of the, one of those other three or four high, high-impact categories. So, when, when they exit out of our district, a question I've gotten from you guys is, okay, what are we doing to get information from them to understand why are they leaving us? And that's tough, because they, they are required, when they exit, to, to enter this into our system, but the data is not real reliable coming through there. And I suspect that most of the time, it's because fear of a, a not-good recommendation once they leave. So, they're either put nothing, or very little, or they're very vague about what they do there. So, what we've done is, okay, in that, in that, in that category, how do we get those folks to share? So, one way that we did that is we, we created, we created a survey. We said, all right, we've gave them, we've given them a little time, they've secured some other employment, it's early fall. Let's send out a survey to their personal email addresses that we do have on file and see if they'd be willing to disclose information about why they left at this time. No. We had three. So, we're like, okay, need a little more work on that concept, so we'll try and figure out, how do we reach out and get good information to, to those ones that have left us and, and see if we can reach them in some type of comfortable zone where they're willing to share that information? So, the, the next step was, okay, instead, what can we do? We do, do what makes sense. Let's talk to the people that are currently with us and, and talk to what, why do they stay and why would they consider leaving? So, that we had much more success on. So, we created a very simple, simple survey to send out to our current teachers, had good response over about two weeks' time, which encompassed the break, also a week on each side, basically, of the break, and we had a thousand responses. And amazingly enough, within thirty seconds of hitting send on my email, I had a teacher email me back and express an extreme amount of gratitude that we were asking them what keeps them here and what matters to them and what's satisfying about their job on a daily basis. And, and those emails kept trickling in over the first day or so that, that we had sent this out. So, we had a thousand responses. Basically, a third of our, of our employees responded.
So, so this, this exit interview, so to speak, it's, it's all electronic, then, for the employee? There, there's not somebody who actually sits down and talks?
But, you know, depending on, at, at no point, I'm sure, is there just a, a break of separation to where no conversation was had whatsoever. So, I'm sure anytime, that's a high, that's a high-impact, it's life decision that someone's making. So, so I'm sure they sit down with the administrators and they, and they discuss some of those issues, and, and it varies. And, and as you'll see in the data that we've got from our, our current teachers, there, it's a little bit, or some of what I share with you is, it's a little bit all over the place on, on why they're satisfied, dis satisfied, stay, go. So, I guess, trying to figure out that, how do we, and, and you also have to be very careful, when, when you're involved in the separation from employment, it gets very litigious very quickly. So, it, and, and people can come back in, in an extended amount of time, once people have tend to forgotten they were here or there, and, and, and come back with a lawsuit or different, you know, it just, it's very interesting when you get into some of that qualitative conversational talk about why they're coming or going or leaving. So, it's, and that, that could impact both sides in a positive or negative way. So, we're going to work on that, and I, I definitely, I want to figure out, how do we get information from the people that have left us?
Yeah, because numbers tell part of a story, right? But there's something to be said for the words behind those numbers, and what are the anecdotes and the, the experiences that?
And, and some do provide some of those notes in there.
Yeah.
And it, you know, it's kind of where you've called them in the, in the range of emotions of that. You know, if some people left and, and it was because their husband moved, but they, they could get a couple digs in on the way out the door, who knows? Or if, if they left and they just want to butter it up for a really good reference, and they're like, oh, so-and-so was the greatest person ever. You know, and they, I don't think, I think helping people understand before they leave that any data you provide back to us on that decision is going to be in safe hands and used for good intentions. I think that's a lot of transparency and communicating that will have, will be a big factor in getting higher-quality information in that regard.
Are we maybe the wrong people that are assembling this information? Would we not maybe want to partner with the L C A or even the S E I U and let them provide an exit interview? Because it's my understanding from some people I've talked to that they'll go, I don't know why I was let go. And part of it is because of the, of what you just spoke about, which is potential litigation, so they're not being open, where they may be more open if we receive that information outside of our arena. Even whether they're union members or not union members, that, that might be a good resource for them to at least be open about it. That's all.
Absolutely. And, and L C A does, obviously, they don't hide their feelings on, on things. They, they do a really good job.
But have they, have they addressed a teacher that left, for example? That would be one of these, one of these people on the pie chart?
I, I guarantee you that, that I've had direct conversation with L C A over people that are represented within this chart, and they're very, L C A is very respectful in discussing individuals like that, as well as we are also, and they, they respect some of the boundaries we can have in some of those conversations. But they definitely engage us when, when someone's in trouble of, you know, losing a job, those conversations are definitely had.
And I'm more about the personal one, that it's harder to get information on. They may be more open to share what personally is going on, and it, it could be with an administrator, again, that they're fearful of the recommendation. I just think a more neutral environment, just using the data, not really to do anything else with it, except that it would begin to maybe point towards some trends.
And we've erred on the side of some of that personal being for, for reasons of, of they worry about negativity in the future. And, and we've worked hard to establish relationship to where they can feel comfortable, and the district is a resource to, the district is also a resource, as well as L C A, to advocate for them. If they're just in a situation to where it, it doesn't match up, that maybe they're not the right skillset personality for that school. Perhaps they do need to transfer to a different environment to work within, within a different school culture that works better for them. So, so we, we're mindful of that also, trying to make sure it is the right fit when it, when that might be the case.
And we're still monitoring. A telltale sign for me was... A telltale sign for me was, was looking at individual schools and looking at number of people that are trying to transfer or leave. And I'm not sure that we've ever were really good at, proactive on that data.
And that data is factoring in. I, I think if, if you go through and look school by school, you'll see some of the actions that have already taken place that have probably likely improved those numbers. Then you see some changes that administration has made that perhaps are in the process of taking hold and, and, and working in the, in the right direction. But the main thing is working with the regional and the transformation team and, and all the different teams on that, within that transformation cabinet to make sure that, that that is valuable to them and, and that it is part of some of the major decisions that go on. The, the last category, the last category that was in the pie chart there is retirement. Saw about sixty-eight retirements, year before it was sixty-one. We had a big spike a few years back, that was a hundred. But we're, we're on track to fall somewhere in that number. So it's just really important that, you know, we, we focus on, you know, how are we going to replace those folks when they go out? So basically, we, we created a teacher retention survey and sent it out, as I mentioned, and we asked a few questions. But we, we kept it short and fairly concise so they could provide us some good feedback. You'll see some of the highlights listed here, but I want you to know the questions that were asked also. What do you look forward to most when you come to work every day or each day? Seventy-eight percent said students and forty percent said coworkers. You can have some overlap because you could answer more than once there. So that's great. People are showing up for the most important things and the great things. So rate your motivation to come to work every day, around seventy percent strongly agreed or agreed that they were highly motivated to come to work every day. They're motivated. What are sources of satisfaction? That was, that was a big, where we, we were pleasantly surprised to see that the highest ranking sources of satisfaction were admin, support and school culture. Those were both at the fifty percent mark. So that, that's very positive. I think that says a lot to, where a lot of people might believe perceptions that float around that administrative support is not there, it's really kudos to our principals, to the cultures they're building in the buildings with their teams of teachers to, to make it a great place to be satisfied and come to work. Sources of dissatisfaction were, was a question, and that's definitely our areas that we, we like to try and focus on. So these, these were improvement areas that could be out there by far. And I, I think we could probably all guess it. No one in this room, I believe, believes that teachers are, are overpaid. And, and I, I will commend the board and the district and, and everyone that's involved with that, all the way to teachers that, you know, when, when there is ability to, to improve teacher compensation, you guys made a, a strong commitment to, to honor that. The, you know, Ms. Cockroft and I and the group had a discussion over this. The number two area, materials and resources, second highest area of dissatisfaction. That could mean a lot of different things. And that's what we arrived at as we started talking about it. And so we're going to dig a lot deeper into that because it could mean copy paper. It could be dry erase markers, could mean a textbook, could mean technology, could mean, I mean, it's all over the place as we ground down on this. We probably came up with thirty different things that could mean by that. So, so that's one of the areas that, that we need to look at and, and inspect a little bit further.
I know in, in your high schools, some have, especially the science teachers have commented about not having enough supplies or things that they need to do in their classes to do their experiments and things that they do with the kids. So they've had to take their own money to go out and, and buy extra. So I, I could see that being one of the areas there.
I think a lot of that, I mean, if you go back and dig heavy into the budgets and then you get out to the sites, a, a lot of times is, is it could be that the dollars are there. They just need to be prioritized in those areas. So it is looking at science in particular, you know, labs are expensive.
Well, one of the things that I replied back to or the individual was that in looking at what their school had left over in their budget, that could have been used for those areas there. So you may need to go talk to your administrator at the campus.
Well, and, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, you, you were probably going to say something insightful, so I'll let you go first.
I, I was just going to say that as that, the different parts of that transformation team that had to do with materials and, and regional folks, you know, talk with those principals. And sometimes I, the principals might not get that they have those resources available also.
Each school does get a science allocation to spend on those materials.
But then with some of the discretionary funds that they have available that they could use for that as well, we see sometimes at the end of the year, some have maintained a high amount left in there. Of course, they're wanting to use that for something else in order of trying to, to build it up, I understand. But if you have needs already in your, in your school for certain things for the education side, we need to exploit that as well.
Some of the challenge I think exists based on the type of teacher you are or the type of level you are, right? Because when you're elementary, boy, okay, kindergarten, for instance, I can put whatever wish list I wanted out there, send it to my, my parents and I would get it the very next day, right? But now let's say I'm the school's art teacher. Sometimes it gets more challenging to do that because I'm not the child's direct primary classroom teacher. Now you go to middle school, forget it, you know? You've lost that level of support from the parents. So when you get into these high school programs, it becomes even more far removed for parents to, to jump in and be that resource. That's where I think we've got to really look closely as a district to figure out how we can provide for what parents aren't sending in.
And I've, I've asked in the past, I wonder if there's a lack of, of knowledge that you said there was a science allocation for the high schools? Because I've asked teachers in the past how much they have and I hear lead money, which is two hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year, which is insane for a science laboratory. So I wonder if there's a lack of knowledge or a lack of allocation or, I don't know.
It all goes back to the, the point though, that sometimes some of these enrichment programs are just not funded, right? That when you look at the, the school-wide allocation, I think you've spoke to it perfectly that some of it is just not being appropriated in, in the right manner. You know, because I've had PE teachers come to me and say, I got to do walk-up ons to, to get more basketballs. It's like, why, why do you not have a school allocation for that? Because, you know, they don't get the, the school supply list to put out a target and the parent's going to say, oh, my kid needs one basketball, you know, along with all the, the pencils and pens and send that basketball in. So.
I, I think every school has a unique identity and we kind of encourage that. And when you have as many offerings and you have as many opportunities for kids, sometimes those budgets are either spread thin or prioritized differently depending on the, the culture and the identity of the school. So I, I think some of that probably comes into play. And then you, you, you couple that with, with different things that have inflated within their budgets over the, over the years and, and whether we've had budget cuts from different levels and different things like that. So I think it's probably, I'd say it's good time to just look at it and see at, from a school basis, what, what's best for that school and where are some areas where maybe they can shift things in a different direction.
And I, Roger, you'll probably find a variety of practices from school to school because I know at some schools, principals are more willing to put enrichment-type supplies on the general supply list. So then, you know, as that comes into classroom feature, they send a box of tissues down to the, the media center or what, what have you. Whereas other folks are more guarded with that and say, no, no, the supply list is already too overwhelming. So you enrichment teachers, well, you figure it out.
It's certainly an expat, I will tell you that when you go to look into it. And which is good because we, we encourage some site-based management and, and some folks to have some identities. But at the same time, we need to make sure that.
Yeah, you can't leave those folks high and dry.
No, you cannot.
But it, within the site-based management, and I think the dollars that are allocated to the schools based on FTE for them to manage themselves internally, it's about three point eight million dollars or something like that. It's a pretty big number spread out over all the schools. But what kind of support do we give to those? It's supposed to be the budgets are approved by their SAC committees and, and then implemented. But are we given any kind of, because I doubt many of these principals have actually owned businesses where they're managing those kind of budgets? And I don't, it just seems there's a disconnect that we give the dollars, but then we hear it's used differently all over the place.
Well, I, I think there's always room for that. I mean, especially when, when we, there's been a really strong push from being the building manager to the instructional leader and which is great because that's what drives student achievement. So probably more than ever that they bring some of those budgeting skills to the table, especially with our new folks that are taking over schools. So some, some of the ones that have made that transition well and, and had some strong budgeting skills, you could probably see it in evidence of how they've managed their budgets. So I do think it's important and as, as our new CFOs come on board and settle in and things moving forward may provide some of that financial professional development essentially to those people will be helpful and that, that falls into all the different development things. I, it could probably be spoken to a little bit better if we went into that, but I'm, I'm getting down a road that's not my area. It's finance and training and some other areas, but it's definitely, I, I know the people in the room, their ears are probably open to some of those suggestions.
Well, I think nothing drives you more crazy than when you hear a teacher contact you and say, I need such and such, why don't I have it? And then you look at the year-end carry forward and you're like, your school still has half their budget left. Go to the principal and ask what their plan is for fifteen thousand dollars, you know, that? I, I just don't, I don't have a good answer for that.
Or even eighty thousand or so.
Or, yeah, in some cases.
And part of it when I, when I get to then about what we can do moving forward, some of it's communication. If you just ask, instead of posting in the line at Walmart, I had to buy my own supplies, did you ask for the supplies? You know what I mean? So, and that's part of being ambassador for our district and, and that's a big deal of our retention and how we move forward too. So communication is huge on that because a lot of times they just ask, it's, it's there and ready to go.
Well, you know, if they have to buy fewer materials, then that helps resolve number one because then their salary, their, their take-home pay gets a little bit more, right?
This is true, but I, I've also, I've been that teacher that no matter what, I'm going to buy from my classroom.
But the other thing too, sometimes we overlook and, and give full credit to is our resources outside our school system that in our communities and all that, they get in and they buy into the programs. I mean, like Hardee's at the beginning of the school years, usually they, in Taveri's here, they do a great project for Taveri's Elementary, trying to help raise funding for the teachers and the students there. So, you know, buying into the community with our schools, with our administration helps a lot too. So we have to make sure our administration gets involved there.
Do we have a system in place? Because I feel like a teacher shouldn't feel like my principal gave this to me or found it or like it's a, I won, I got, I got this, you know, five hundred dollars to buy tables. So do we have a, a set up system by which people can put purchase orders in at, at the school level?
Again, moving outside of my department, but I would reasonably believe that at the school base, you know, departments have budgets and, and there's methods for, for folks to get the things they need, even planning ahead, not just on the whim when it comes up that they need them. So, yeah, I'm sure there's systems and programs in place to help with all that. Now, some might be weaker than others. That, that's what we find in everything, you know, as, as we move across the different schools. All right. So the, all right, we talked about retirees, mentioned them. One second to get back on track here.
Well, well, I think we were on that, that slide here. So for me, the, the most concerning things are probably the last two bullets there, right? That, I mean, at any change of the breeze, somebody's going to, almost half our people are, are willing to leave, right?
Those are so happen.
And that, this is.
This, this makes my head spin.
These are, these are two of the things that, that I, I found most baffling also and that's why they're on here. And the fact that you would leave to work outside of education kind of speaks to, I think, society as a whole right now, across the whole United States, or you're seeing waves of that. So I get that and we've talked about some combating that issue. And then you move over to the forty-four percent that would leave Lake to work in another school district. A lot of that, being somebody that, that I've worked, I've been blessed to work closely with fifteen, twenty-plus districts because I was part of a consortium that we were constantly together talking about different ailments that we all shared and what was unique about us. What came back is you, you've got a lot of grass of green, grass is greener mentality. And as you see some of the comments that came back through our survey, some of it, you can tell that they're either just misinformed or just don't have a real strong understanding of if they go to a neighboring district, what the difference is truly going to be. And you'll see, so, so you'll have people that say, well, I can go next door and make more money in a certain county. Or, but then for every comment like that, you have some that say, I went to Orange County and I ran back to Lake because the, the, the culture here is so much better and what I thought was going to be improvement in my compensation wasn't necessarily that way once you factored in benefits and travel or, or wherever the case may be. And by the way, we're in ballpark, we're, we're competitive as far as salary. Throughout the state, it's hard to go by average salary, but we're sitting around the thirty-five mark, about the middle. But average salary is tough because you might have a district that's heavy loaded with veterans and you might have some that's heavy loaded with, with new people. So that averages stuff at the time. But really looking at why would you leave and go to another district? And so communication, as I'll mention in a minute, and, and helping people understand what's true, what's real, what's reality and, and counseling them through those decisions. Okay, you're, you're really considering this, then let's talk about it. Let, let's talk about why would you want to do that? Because I'm going to be honest with you, it's, it's, it's what we have to do, especially from an HR department or employee relations perspective, let's talk about how's that going to benefit you or hurt you? And most of the time, it, it, it hurts them to leave our district. So we, we want to make sure that's clear and they understand that, that this is a really great place to work with some really good things in place.
I almost wish you almost had some sort of early warning sign indicators, right? Some sort of system like we have for potential dropout to students? That if, if, you know, you see that they've got one foot out the door, what can you do? Or, or, I mean, are, is there any sort of data that exists that, you know, that, are they, are they late to work more often? Did they stop sponsoring this club? Or they, do they give up that other, you know, after-school event? You know, what are some signs that indicate that people are starting to check out?
I think definitely encouraging principals and people that are closer to them to watch for the signs is key. And I think we, we do a decent job of that, but at the same time, aren't we losing some that we should not be losing? Or are we losing some that would be a better fit up the road or down the road here within the district? Or just, we, we do have to make it more personal and that's why, I'm going to get to that in just a second. Before I transition over to Ms. Cockroft, who's, who's waited on me with my rambling patiently, basically what are some of the things that we're currently doing and we'll talk about moving forward in a few minutes? But we revised our transfer period. Used to be we post jobs and non-renewed folks for a period of time for no reason. And then, then people would think there's available jobs prior to transfer period and things like that. So there's a lot of confusion there. So we revised our HR timeline so that people were not displacing people for temporary and creating confusion about their job security. And I think we'll see that help. We've got new teacher online question and answers and, and different methods of sending out surveys on, on retention. Creation of new teacher support materials, whether it be electronic resources or whether us resources experts on the other end of the line here, we've developed tools for them to understand their salary and, and, and how performance pay factors in and what their base salary truly is and how that builds and what their base that they can't lose from that point moving forward is or how different things like COLA affect them. So we've got materials to help with that. Also in that, we're developing and making available for them to monitor their certification through Skyward and, and have reports directly that they can be able to do that. And we've also, that's where my team has blended together with Ms. Cockroft's team and all this good transition to her. My HR folks have gone out, one or two, to all the different schools and are counseling one- to three-year teachers directly face-to-face on their certification needs. So HR is going out into the schools to make sure that we're not losing folks due to certification. And then professional development is a huge factor in retention. So, Ms. Cockroft.
Excuse me. A huge issue has been that when a teacher, did I hear you say that, that in the past where we would send out a notification that basically people referred to it as a pink slip, but that your contract has not been renewed? And then you would go through until July or whatever it is and then you would get a new contract? Are you saying we don't do that now? Because that's been huge, that it was up.
And we have a reportment, reappointment date in the, in the deadline. And basically where there were some people that, that perhaps on annual contract would be called in limbo in that period, we, we no longer do that. If you are securing your employment. If you are securing your employment and, and we are sure you're coming back, we have a reappointment deadline and everyone we possibly can is, is locked into that deadline. So they know early on, uh, what, what exactly their date is, um, that they've secured their job for the following year. The timeline, they updated timeline for that. I, I wish I had it pulled up right now. Uh, I could tell you the date for last year, but, um, will be out by the end of January. So this will be, we're trying to get those out earlier and earlier every year. So, uh, I'm gonna share the reappointment timeline with you guys when the new retention data also comes out.
And I thought the appointment was state statute.
It is. Was it July or?
June thirtieth, isn't it?
I, I'm gonna honestly, I, I know all that information, but pulling it out of my head right in a second.
It, it doesn't matter, but it's still...
There is a, yes, there is a distinct date. Was it April first or is it?
Okay, let's forget about the date.
I, I can't, I...
It's before, it's before the school year.
Yeah, it's, it's well before the school year lets out. It's just my mind can't, because the...
But we are doing it earlier.
Yes. And, and there is some, there is some schools, different schools of thought on that, because if you have folks that you're non-renewal, that, that puts you in the middle of testing and you don't want them, you know, it puts it in the testing window, but now the testing window is so big and, you know, you gotta do it sometime. And it's more friendly whether they're gonna be your employee next year or not gonna be your employee next year, that you let them know in a professional and respectful manner that they...
But we're not, did you say we're doing it in January?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you. I thought I heard that. I was gonna say that was a little bit, what is it, the transfer?
What, what, what's...
Something was about January.
Something about the end of January.
The timeline for this year will be about the end of January. I'm like, what? No, um, no, 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 no. We, it's, it's basically, um, somewhere in that first third of the testing window. I'll have to remember the date. I promise you can hit me in the hallway and I'll be able to tell you right away. But, um, so letting them know as early as possible is what we...
Both ways. In other words, that if you're a great teacher, we're letting you know that you're gonna be with us or we, we plan to offer you a new contract.
And they, they are, we let them know you're being reappointed for the following year.
Can do that? That early? Okay. But if you're not, we're also telling them that part. Which I kinda keep that secret, just so that we're...
But, and those are difficult conversations to have. And I have a tremendous similar respect and haven't had a lot of those, um, not myself with folks. That, that they're...
For the very reason you said, that if I didn't plan to appoint somebody, I would kinda hold that one off, because the, if you tell them, they're gonna go, "I'm done."
Well, once the hay's in the barn and the kids have been educated and you're testing, then you have to move to definitely a professional respect to allow them time to make adjustments with their family and livelihoods. So we're trying to reduce those.
So, but the, the other awkward piece of that is that I think we've heard, um, whirlwind of is that principal might say something along the lines of, "You're not reappointed unless, uh, nobody else comes along better than you." And then, then in which case, uh, "I'll reconsider that decision to not reappoint you." How, is, is there something like that going on?
Yeah, they have to reappoint them at, at a certain date.
Right.
I mean, yeah, I think you, you have...
So they say, "I'm not ready to reappoint you yet," or?
I'd say that, that, that probably has happened, that as of, as of thus far, your performance as an employee or, or, "I'm not sure that you're the right fit for this school." However, you know, now I doubt it's, if I don't find anybody better is the way it comes out, but I'm sure there's...
Should not say those exact words.
There's some crafty wordsmithing that goes around that.
You read between the lines.
Yes.
I think it's, I think it's legitimate said just like that, by the way.
I, I will tell you that...
I think it's been passed on to us that way.
The preferred communication from principals is just to be straightforward and honest about what's going on, and more times than not, that's what happens. But I, I can't tell you honestly that things like that do not happen. We try and coach them away from that type.
All right. Well, we are very excited to work with HR on making sure that everybody has the knowledge and skills that they need in order to help with teacher retention. Dr. Weiskopf led us off this summer with leaders with all the administrators and, uh, working on best, um, research-based best practices on keeping all teachers. Um, I'm primarily gonna speak with you today about new teachers, first-year teachers to Lake and first-year to the classroom as well. So we have, um, new teacher support teams that are, that we partner with HR on that he talked about going out into the field. Each school has identified a team of teachers, uh, not just teachers, there's an administrator on there as well, usually a coach, and then hopefully one mentor. Some schools have a, a team of mentors. Sometimes the new teachers never leave the team. They stay to support other new teachers depending upon that school. So that, that support can be provided right at that school level, um, in a meaningful way to the culture of that school, like Mr. Farnsworth had talked about earlier. And we provide, Linda Connor actually leads up the learning around this and she provides quarterly sessions with those teams to make sure they have the tools that they need, um, that they understand the, the, um, new teacher and the, the struggles they may be going through and the celebrations they may have and the research that goes along with all of that. And she has developed, uh, resources, the hub that is called it there. That's just a plethora of resources that are there at, um, one place so people don't have to go looking for them, that the mentors can use, administrators can use, and the new teachers themselves can use in order to be successful in the classroom. We also have monthly teacher induction sessions. Those are for teachers that weren't able to come to New Beginnings to get their onboarding, um, or they were hired after New Beginnings happened, so that they are getting an onboarding as well. And then we make sure they have a mentor assigned to them, um, as well as follow-up with any questions or the concerns that they have at the school. Uh, and Linda does provide tier support for each school based on their need. When you talk about those schools have different, uh, retention rates, uh, she gets in there and really works, um, heavily with some of those schools that are maybe struggling a little more to keep their teachers as well.
Question. The mentor, is that, uh, school-based?
Yes.
Okay.
School-based mentor. So, and we try, the schools, um, that was one of the things that Dr. Weiskopf really talked a lot this summer with our administrators about, picking a mentor that would be meaningful to the teacher, um, and provide, uh, just a great relationship starting off their career in Lake.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any idea, are teachers availing themselves of these mentors? For example, I was assigned some mentor for FSBA and I've never spoken to that person. So, like, are, are these teachers actually...
Are the mentors actually following through? Is that...
Yeah.
Yes, there is. Uh, they have to keep logs, the, um, in order to, um, provide the, to get their stipend for it, because that was part of the compensation packet that the mentors get paid. And they are having to provide a log and the resources, I mean, and the time that they're spending with them, there's a set amount of time that they're supposed to spend, spend for that stipend. And so they are, and a lot of the mentors are volunteering. And then we have peer mentor training for them too, so that it is more than just a check-in, that they are working on, um, new teachers have support, not just in figuring out the culture of that building, but the emotional support they need and the instructional support. So the peer mentoring training really helps them be able to help assist with all of those areas, support all those areas.
And there's a follow-up survey where you'll ask, like, "I haven't talked to my mentor ever or I, my mentor couldn't have done it without him." Like, that's gonna be part of the evaluation process.
Yes. Yes. Uh, Linda's already done a survey around what things have they found was helpful, um, for the services that we're giving, and there will be one at the end as well. We don't wanna wait till the end of the year. That's why there's those check-ins along the way. And then, um, Linda has given a, a monthly list of, "You should be working on these things with your new teachers for that, that school-based team," so that they are checking in. How, one of the questions on there is to the administrators, "How do you know the mentor is meeting with the new teacher? What are the signs? And are you certain that they're doing that? And have you checked in with your new teachers to be sure that they're, um, getting what they need from their mentor in that relationship?" I had a mentor and then I had a next-door neighbor.
Right.
And I'm hoping that the school community as a whole, it's, the mentor might be the one that's assigned that has to do it, but the school community as a whole, um, just embracing the new teachers on their campus. Um, other training that we have are for those instructional coaches as well, because we wanna make sure that they have the tools and resources they need to provide, um, instructional support in the planning lessons and delivering the lessons and the follow-up and reflection that's needed for them to become effective teachers. Because ultimately, we know the impact a teacher has on a classroom and the more effective they are and satisfaction they have with that part of their job, I think will also help them want to stay in the classroom more. So we have two different layers of that. The instructional coach training is a four-day training. And then the peer coaching is a, a synopsis of that. It's a one-day training that is a higher level, um, overview of those pieces. In addition, um, Mr. Farnsworth mentioned the alternatively-certified teachers, the, the ones that come in temporary certified. This year, we've hired thirty percent of our new teachers are alternatively, or they're temporary certified, so they have to go through alternative certification to get their professional certificate. And they have three years to do that. Um, the area that he mentioned was that general knowledge test. And yeah, a lot of these people are career changers. So they haven't taken a standardized test in a long time. It's not that they don't have the knowledge and skills to do it, they just haven't thought about it in a test in that way in a long time. So we provide study sessions for them. And then when they are successful, Title II also reimburses, uh, that test cost for them, helping with that as well. And then we have, um, a library of certification booklets that can help them pass those certifications, subject area certifications.
What does that certification test look like? Is it, is it somewhere they go to take it?
Yes, it is off our site. It's, it is a testing center.
Like a prison.
And it's expensive.
Those people are full of charm too.
They check you coming into the...
Oh, my goodness. But when, when, I don't even know if this model's available, but when I got my pilot's license and there was an intense, like, two-day, they drove you right after that. They came in and gave you the test, so everything was fresh. Is, is that...
So you could do that maybe on some of the certification points, but the general knowledge, they say it goes through high school math. The teachers tell me it goes through calculus on there. I don't know about y'all, but I couldn't master calculus in high school. Um, and then there's the writing piece on there as well. So if you're thinking about you're teaching preschoolers and you're having to demonstrate mastery in geometry, that might not be what you're, what you've been thinking about for the last, you know, ten years. Or if you're a career changer, you might not have been thinking about those things at all. So it's just getting, giving them those knowledge back. We, we have found smaller chunks and letting them process it and come back and problem solve again.
So what does that look like? Do you bring these...
They come in in the evening after...
After hours.
After hours, and we have people that come in and support them with that. Um, the, those alternatively-certified teachers have to select a program to go through based on their statement of eligibility that they're given, Linda, get a temporary certification. And we have a program called Professional Development Certification Program. It's the old ALT-Cert program. You'll hear us refer to it as PDCP. Our PDCP program is run by Dr. Sheila Oldham. And, um, it is a, it is a, um, job embedded training that they can use their classroom. It's almost like doing an internship while you're going through the requirements at the same time. And, uh, competency-based program as well. They do have to pay eighteen hundred dollars to participate in that program. And that pays for a coach that they get for the, um, time that they're in the program as well as an assessor for the competency-based tasks that they go through. Uh, the, the coach is a onsite at their building and typically somebody who teaches the same, um, subject area or, or similar to them that is sort of the role-like coach. And they also go through training, that's state-refered training, um, that Sheila gives with them as well. And the ClinEd is part of what they have to have, same as you would to have an intern in your classroom. And, um, then the assessor is off-campus and they provide feedback as well. And both of these are, um, hand-selected by the school-based administrators. Um, they have monthly support meetings as well and come to the LRC and work on those tasks together and learn from each other, uh, in, in the district focus and how to align those pieces. This isn't something else. These are things that you are expected to do to be a great instructor in Lake already and how can they help you meet your requirements for certification in that program. And then they have opportunities to shadow other teachers in the district so that they can see, um, exactly what it is. We are hoping that they'll be able to do themselves as well. And the retention rate for that program, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna, so why, okay, why do we charge them?
Well, because we don't have the budget to pay for all of the coaches and mentors themselves. That is one thing that we have talked with HR about, a possibility of picking up the cost of that in order to have that, that team surrounding them. Now, we have to pay them and we don't have to...
So what's special about this versus, like, I don't, what are they getting for their eighteen hundred dollars? I'm confused.
They, and they end up with their professional, the requirements, they meet the requirements for the professional certification. So instead of going to a university and taking the college classes that they have to, these are skills that they show competency through their classroom and then they are able to...
But what is the professional certification versus, I guess, a regular certification?
Temporary. It's a temporary, you have it for three years based on your back, like, if you have a bachelor's degree not in education, um, for instance, I hired a gentleman who had a business management degree with a lot of math. I hired him to be a math teacher. He got a temporary certification to be able to teach the math, but he had to then, the state lists what he has to go through. He has to do, pass general knowledge test, he has to pass a certification test, he has to pass a P, he has to complete a PEC. Um, and then probably, there's usually about five classes that they have to take in order to get their professional certification. This is an alternative way, rather than going to a college and taking those five classes, that they would complete all those requirements with us under the guidance of the coach and, um, the assessor on their own campus.
Is that, okay, so I didn't realize that there was five classes that, that you had to take. Is that...
Every, it's individual for every teacher. We don't recommend that they do our program unless they have all five to take. So some of them only have three. It kinda depends on what their pathway was in their transcript. And the state bases their letter on their personal transcript. So every teacher's different. That's why that form that HR has created that has everybody looking at the same thing and what a teacher needs, because every teacher is different. So this is geared more towards those teachers that need all five. Um, and then it's a less expensive option for them, uh, most of the time.
Eighteen hundred dollars is less expensive?
Than going to the university and taking those five classes, yes.
And they struck that upfront?
What are those five classes?
No, they, uh, it's payroll deducted.
But now, there are some paths where you don't have to do any of those classes if you just take the right tests, right?
There's, there is...
Because if I recall, when I, when I got my professional certificate, I, I had to take a free K through three. That doesn't exist anymore.
No, that, they closed that loophole.
Oh, that, that was a good loophole.
You, you examine transcripts when they come in and see how close, um, are your certification is? And, and then it's evaluated at ti, that time. What do you need to close in on that? Think of your professional certificate basically as your licensure for life as long as you keep the P up after that. So to meet those demands within the three-year temporary, coming from a career changer, I can tell you, I, I, I went through this process. It cost me more than eighteen hundred dollars. I went through, uh, EPI, which is Education Preparation Institute at Santa Fe College, um, in Gainesville. So it, it costs, you know, it costs, because my wife went in and at the same time I did, it, it cost us both to get our professional certificates more than eighteen hundred dollars. And that was just going through a, a college rather than a university.
What are the classes?
It depend, each person's is different. Base, it's basically a college transcript.
I'm totally confused on why each person's is different. Like, I don't get it.
Because you have a different college pathway to get to the point of your alternative, your temporary certificate. Most of the time, they are methods classes, methods of teaching. But it is different based on who, you know, your pathway to get, like, if you started off in education, you might have taken a couple of the classes. But most of the time, they're the education classes.
But the, the five classes that you need aren't different. They are different.
Yes.
How come the five classes are different? That doesn't make any sense.
Because you might have had a pathway to get to that alternative, that temporary certificate that was different than Mr. Dodd's pathway to get there. So it, it's based on your college transcript and what classes you need to meet that requirement.
Which is better in a sense, because it's tailored to the individual. I even, I paid more and I took, you know, I don't know how many classes that were very broad and general, uh, at the, this was years ago in order to get there, whereas this is more tailored to them.
Is this sort of like homeschool for our teachers? I mean, do they have books and...
It's an on, the, the PDCP program is an online curriculum based to the state. It meets the state requirements for alternatively-certified teachers.
So, d- does the state understand that this is, this is probably one of those things that's causing a teacher shortage? So does the state understand that this is, this is probably one of those things that's causing a teacher shortage? Right? Because, okay, so, so now if I look back, all right, and I think, okay, am I going to leave a great career at Disney to, to go teach? Oh, I gotta go take five classes because I probably don't have any of them from, from college that, that I'm looking for. So I gotta pay either eighteen hundred dollars to do this. Well, I'm already going to take the pay cut and pay another eighteen hundred dollars and I don't have the classes and no, I'm just going to stay in the business world, right?
Yeah.
So.
Well, and, and I don't understand, like, with, you know, okay, he's got a degree in, in political science. So like, he's going to have different classes than me who has a degree in science? Like, it doesn't, like, I'm totally confused on how come the base classes aren't the same? Like, it's, like, is it an education degree we're trying to get? Like, what is the?
You end up with professional certification in an area. So if you're going for science certification, your professional certi, what the classes you need, you apply, so you apply to teach science and get a, let's say, middle grade science certificate. The state then looks at your transcript and is able to say, you're going to need this, this, and this. Mr. Dodd went for elementary certification. So the state said, you need this, this, and this. So it's based on your pathway that you get there and your outcome that you're trying to achieve and what class. So you might need a methods in science. He might need elementary, I don't know, psychology.
Good point, let's read a second class because you're not.
Okay, so within the goal, those are the same. So if we were both trying to get elementary certifications and we both didn't have any of the classes, we would both take the same five classes?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was where I was totally confused.
And you end up with professional certification that then lasts five years.
Okay.
One of the most difficult things, you mentioned the state, is that that general knowledge test has to be passed by law in the first year. And that math teacher that I told you about, he did the, the reason why the state closed that loophole, he did that. He did the pre-K loophole. He was a middle school math teacher, so that's why the state closed that loophole. So now they all have to go through these requirements. And there are different, there are several different programs, different, there's the EPI programs. There's, I was at UCF at a business, a business meeting the other day that they, a partnership meeting, that they talked about a master's degree program. You can end up with your master's degree at the end and have your professional certificate. So there's different, different ways to achieve the professional certificate, but you have to have it within three years. And you could possibly have to get ESOL and reading endorsement during that time as well.
And ESE.
And ESE.
Do we pay for those? If I throw that in there?
We, we pay for their reimbursements if they pass a test that they need to be, that they need to be in field in their classroom.
But we charge them to take the class? And ESOL, ESE?
We do not, we do, they get fifty dollars a class for ESOL. When they get their endorsement on their certificate, they can reimburse that money as well when they finish the requirements for that fifty dollars. The other cost is paid for by the district.
Do we have a whole bunch of teachers? Because I'm thinking, I, I would quit after three years, too. Like.
Well, good news is our PDCP teachers stay.
Well, and that's what I think that you've got to, you've got to remember. These are people that didn't go to school to be a teacher. Like, these are people like Mr. Dodd that are career changers after college.
But I had to do this method.
Right, right.
If I had to do this method, I don't know that I would have.
That's my, yeah, that's my point.
But you have to, you, so you saying that you don't have to do anything would suggest that anybody that got a degree in any other field could come into a kindergarten classroom and teach effectively.
Not any, not anybody.
Right, that's the point. So we can't just assume that teachers, anybody, not teachers, that come from a teacher prep program can walk into a classroom and be as effective as somebody that came from a teacher education program that knows child psychology, that knows how to teach new math, that knows how to deliver an effective lesson plan, that knows all of those pieces. And so it's, those classes, like they said, are tailored for people. The state of Florida is that anybody with a degree can now be a teacher. Anybody, doesn't matter what your degree is in. You have a four-year degree, here you go, you can come into a classroom. This is district's way of trying to close the gap between you're a political science major that doesn't know anything about how a seven-year-old learns or the curriculum or the standards.
Well, you can't be with that big of a brush.
Well, then, then like you're saying, that anybody can do it and you don't need any extra training.
Not, not anybody could do it. Some people coming out of a teacher prep program can't do it. And some people from the business world who have zero experience in a classroom can step into the classroom and day one and be effective.
Agreed.
You know, so.
It's a gift, but how do you evaluate a gift to make sure?
See, that's the key is the gift. Because I can see where, where, when high unemployment, that coming to a school district, particularly if there's a shortage, would be a bastion, at least to get a J O B. And so the idea that we may have people that aren't, because I think it's genetic. I think great teachers genetically, it's just tuned in. That's just my opinion about it. I've been in a classroom and I sucked at it. But, but. Nobody. Don't get me sidetracked. But the idea that we then give this person who couldn't find a job anywhere else in the private sector now as a teacher and we give them three years is even a little bit offensive to me, quite honestly.
Well, we don't give them three years.
Well.
No, we do.
One to pass a test.
So one to pass general knowledge, which hopefully they can pass general knowledge.
But they still have to perform. We wouldn't reappoint them.
Which is some of the statistics that Mr. Friend just shared earlier. Some of those that are not reappointed. But we want to, they're still in that classroom during that time. We want every teacher, we want every child to have a teacher that's effective. So during that time, we want, we're providing these support teams that they can do that as well as a lot of other professional learning that I do think improves teacher effectiveness.
But they, but they, if you come in, like, I'm brand new. And so you evaluate me and I need like forty classes, because that's me. But then for eighteen hundred dollars, then, that you're going to payroll deduct, I'm now going to be taking classes after school?
Well, they're online, so you take them, yes.
Oh, but I'm assigned a teacher on the campus then?
A coach that's going to help you there. But that's, that doesn't, that program doesn't start until year two. You have that first year to.
But if somebody can't pass the general knowledge.
They can't get in our program.
But they, they, should they be in our classroom?
Well, I do, does every, there's some, there are some higher level skills on those that might not pertain to the subject areas that they're teaching necessarily. Because there's two points. There's the general knowledge and then there's their certification test. So if they're, they have to be experts in their content to get the certification. And then the general knowledge is a base, is a, is supposed to be a baseline test. But the teachers that take that test will tell you it is much more difficult than a general knowledge.
So accepting, because there's been a whole lot of controversy about the test itself, the general knowledge. But if I, again, I'm just going to keep it on me. So I come to you and you hire me to be a teacher. Then I take the general knowledge test?
Within that first year to take and pass it.
Okay, but I'm teaching right now. I'm in the classroom. And then I score a twelve because I'm stupid. So should I ever have been in the classroom to start with? I mean, it seems like most jobs, you take a test before you went to the classroom.
If they're teacher candidates, they do.
Here's the great debate with the general knowledge exam. I might be teaching fourth grade reading. It might be an excellent ELA teacher. However, I'm still, in order to get that certification, I still have to take calculus. Which I'm not, I'm never going to teach it, but the state requires that they pass that exam. And that's, that's where superintendents have come together and said, you know, why, why do we do this to people? Why do, why, with a teacher's shortage, why do we not? If I'm teaching fourth grade ELA, if that's, then why can't I get certification in reading, right? So that's a, that's a really a state debate. It's not something that.
And that's universities, too. That's not just.
So from the beginning of time, we pretty much screwed the teacher with the test.
Right. And I, I'm just, I, I'm blown away by the fact that I would need more certification to teach here than I would to teach in college. Like, I would need to go through five, five, like, I could go teach at a college right now.
With your PhD, you could just come buy somewhere.
Yeah, but you have a doctorate to teach, right?
Right, but that doesn't, that doesn't make it so that I could teach elementary education here.
That's right.
So I would have to go through five more eighteen hundred dollars and wear classes and.
No, if not if you're a certified teacher, you can just take the test for elementary then.
Not a certified teacher.
If you have any certification.
But I taught in colleges.
If you qualify for any K-12 certification and you have that certification, you can take another certification test. So like that math teacher I was telling you about that I hired, he took the pre-K three test, did that loophole. That did not help him be in field to teach in my middle school math class. He then took the middle school math test. That's where his, he had to prove competency in the middle school math, passed it, and he was certified professionally. No longer an alternative, a temporary.
Right.
All right, so I'm thinking back to when I was first applying for a job as a teacher, right? And, and I didn't have all these, these tests under my belt yet. And I'd walk in and I'd say, okay, so I really want to get hired. What do I need to do to stand out? And the administrator said, well, I've got a stack like this big of applications. So if you want to stand out from this stack, well, you should probably take your, your subject area. Okay, then you move to this stack, which is a little smaller. You should go take your general knowledge. Now, now you're looking like you are somebody who's really in and dedicated to this. So I did all that even before I, you know, applied for a job.
That would make sense to me.
But, so, so is the problem now our stack is not like this anymore? So, so that's the problem. So now, now people are, so we're kind of just taking people without these tests because, because we have to versus back then, for whatever reason, you could be exclusive.
Well, I think our goal is to always hire the most qualified candidate for our classrooms. And sometimes when it gets down to, there isn't anybody that's qualified on paper. We're also looking at, for that interview, that interaction with children and the relationships that they're able to build and the, the aspects that they might bring. Other, other, as a career changer, there's other aspects to the classroom field. For instance, we keep going back to that math teacher. He coached little league and soccer and like three different sports that he coached. I knew he had interaction with children. I was able to get references from them. But honestly, there were no other math certified people coming to apply for that position. So yes, I had, then had a look at the candidates who didn't meet those requirements yet. And, and we know, Mr. Friend just said earlier, there is a shortage in teachers. So we want to make sure that we are providing the best resources available. And that's where the, yes, they do have to pay, but it is a quality program for work that they have to do anyway. So there are this online curriculum. But this online curriculum, for instance, one of the things they have to do is set up the rules for their classroom and, and show how they're going to teach and implement them. They have to do that to be a successful teacher anyway. So that's part of what will help them meet the requirements through this Professional Development Certification Program as well. So it's job embedded, meaningful to the position that they're in now.
Yeah, that's cool.
And they stay, at least so far.
Except for the forty-four percent that are looking.
Okay, wrapping things up on our, our last slide here. You know, what, moving forward, what are we looking at? You know, there is no magic antidote to, to fix this retention as a whole as it's a, an issue that we're facing and a shortage. But, you know, we mentioned a couple bullets here. And I won't, I know we've gone long, so I won't elaborate too far. But authentically engaging teachers. I mean, I, I think what we see is fairly unique in this district in that we're having real conversations with teachers and probing them for real information. You know, with our superintendent is a good example, going out and, and speaking directly with, with, with people. She's getting, I know she's getting ready to do another round of visiting with teachers and getting their authentic communication there. Even in HR, which I'm, I'm working, my goal this year is for all of our new employee and induction, or non-inductions, orientations that, that they're greeted by, by someone from the district office that is, is in a high level administrative position to, to help them know that they've, they've got, you know, good folks and educators that they're working for. And, and can't emphasize enough, you know, the closer we get to them, to the teachers and the more support they feel, it's going to impact retention. And making it personal and, and getting face to face with teachers and seeing, because they, they have a variety of, a variety of things that satisfy and dissatisfy them. Targeted support, you know, and looking at individual schools. Okay, here's the data on a particular school with retention. How can this data factor into the overall plan of improvement for that school? And how can we support the teachers and the administrators at, at those schools in particular that we see are, are resting below the average or getting close to the average? How do we raise that average of retention of teachers? Focusing on those individual sources of satisfaction. You know, we, we all, teachers, we're all educators, just like kids. We come from different backgrounds, needs, characteristics that we have. So working to really differentiate the support for, for teachers like we expect teachers to do for kids. And, and making sure those teachers understand that, yes, personally, we are connected to you and, and we're in touch with your needs both professionally and personally. Improving compensation within fiscal constraints, constraints. You know, like I said, you guys' reputation, if it's available, even when it pulls us close to the line, you guys have, have really committed to making sure our teachers are, are taken care of. And if you look back at the patterns, the, before you guys were here and before I was here, I mean, there's been a consistent pattern of, of trying to do the best we can to compensate teachers with the funds that are available. Continuing to communicate with transparency. I think that's something that I've heard the most since I came in the district, that there's a real air of transparency with this board and in this administration, all the way down to the school administrators, that, and really, it, it wasn't anything that was extremely cloaked intentionally, but I think it's just more airing things out and recognizing when misconceptions or, or perceptions are, are not quite in line with reality. So making sure that we're doing a good job of communicating with those folks and addressing it and not letting it, it, it rest. Because a lot of times, you know, benefits is a good example. People don't understand insurance. How do we better communicate their insurance to them? Because that's a big deal and it's going to become a big deal because it's not getting any cheaper for anyone and we all own it. You know, and, and like I said earlier, I've worked with a lot of districts and I've seen the grass is not greener because we all come to the table with the same frustrations on how to support our people. So, so the question boils down to how do we, what truly will make us different? And, and from, from an HR perspective and administrator perspective and educational educator perspective is understanding that we're all educators and in some level or form or fashion, or we wouldn't be involved in this, and eliminate that underlying tension that, that possibly exists between teacher and administrator. If we look at all, all each other and, and respect one another openly for being educators, I, I think that's a huge step that we can make, and I know this sounds a little fluffy, but it's the truth. We're people, people in a people business. And if that respect, we respect the challenges you face in the classroom every day. And what do you hear from a teacher as soon as they become an administrator? I had no idea. You know, that's the first thing they say when the wave of responsibility and, and pressure hits you as an administrator and your lifespan went from here to here. It, it, it's huge. And having a respect for that, I think, is a huge step that, that we can take. You know, nobody shows up and wants to make anybody's life as an educator more difficult for the day. I mean, the goal and what we've seen in, in, in some of the results when we reached out is that we're all here for kids and we're here for the right reason. And that's the big point that stuck out on some of our surveys that we did was everybody's here for the kids. So just recognizing those pressures, expressing respect was probably some of the feedback we got. And, because people think of gratitude and it's not trophies and certificates. Those are great. And the things we do to recognize people, that, that's really good. But that respect is what a lot of teachers crave. And if you feed that in small dosages, both directions on a daily basis, we're going to prosper and separate, separate ourselves from other districts that are sitting in the same boat as we are in the state. And, and I think we're going to see our retention improve greatly. So, you know, just addressing the issues upfront and transparent and, and really getting into individuals. And, and what do you need within this program? How can we tailor things to you? What do you not understand? And, and then trying to provide some forecast of what they might not understand on the horizon or what's been a confusion in the past and provide resources and a, and a, and a mechanism to help them understand those things. And I think that will help our retention greatly. I have to keep it light on the way to school with my girls in the morning. So this morning, they wanted to play some loud crazy music. I said, no, dad needs mellow on the way. So we went mellow and I asked them, I said, you know, what, what do you think? I asked my third grader Emma Kinnear and I said, what do you think makes teachers want to come to work every day? And right off the bat, both of them said us. We're, we're, we're great kids. The kids here are great. That's why teachers want to come. So that was some good qualitative data I picked up today. And I said, well, what makes you think they want to leave? And my third grader said, it's, it's the toilet paper. It's like sandpaper. And I said, well, I can set you straight that we are equal opportunity toilet paper people because the same administration toilet paper is the same for the students and the teachers. And then we went to this conspiracy theory of there's a, what'd she call it? A secret layer where, where the adults have the good toilet paper. I said, no. So we had to dispel, but it was a good process of dispelling some of the misconceptions and perceptions that might be out there. But it also speaks that, how something smaller could be truly a source of satisfaction or dissatisfaction that we might not be recognizing in an individual. So that's, um, we're going to continue working on it because this is the exciting work of HR and PD. So I do expect to see these numbers improve within the context of, of what our industry is looking like at the time.
Was that sort of a subliminal way of saying that you want the board to approve a better toilet paper?
Some people bring their own. And I told them, I said, that's not true. A lot of teachers don't even have time to go to the bathroom. So we definitely, it, it was interesting from the mouths of babes, right?
May I really quickly, Mr. Campbell, just give a shout out? Ms. Cockcroft and even Chad and several of you in the audience have been to see our UCF graduates. So last year, some of my colleagues and me put together some funding from the university that allowed us to not pay anybody. So that needs to be said out front, that, but we could provide meals, which if you feed people, we know they will come in education. But it was for our post students, so it's students that are teaching today in Lake County schools that are not in our UCF program anymore. And we have great attendance at those events and we literally bring them together and we say to them, what do you need? Now that you're there and you're in the classroom and you're putting all this together, what do you need? And a lot of times, like, I'll just give you an instance. This month, they asked, well, last month, I suppose, they asked us for, last month, I suppose, they asked us for, they don't know how to deal with extreme behaviors, like extreme, extreme behaviors in their classroom, and they also need help with trauma, so one of them expressed that they had a sibling die of one of their students, another one had a parent die, and they're just like, "We don't know how to help these students, but we see them grieving in our classroom, and we are talking about mental health," so I contacted Ms. Carnegie, just because I didn't really know, a lot of times I kind of know who to contact, and she gave me a suggestion for one of our local principals, and Ms. Myers is coming in at the end of this month to specifically speak to them about those exceptional behaviors that they're seeing and traumas, which she has experience with, so my point is, Ms. Connor has been there, Ms. Seal works very closely with us, Emily has come in, Dwayne Weeks has come in, done robots with these teachers, there are teachers, nobody's getting paid, not any of the people here that have partnered with us, and not our teachers, and they continue to come back for the support, and I know they're going to stay, because they're getting the support from the district, they're getting the support from the teachers, and then the university that they graduated from, I mean, I like to think they just come back to see me, but I really think it's because of the support that they're given here in this district, so thank you to you and to your staff and for all of you for being available, so that is definitely going to increase those numbers, I think.
That's an extraordinary program you guys have put together to do that, and as we continue to dive deeper into UCF, pull more folks our direction from there, hopefully it's going to grow, and it's a great thing, so thank you for helping me out.
This is a love fest.
It is.
Thank you, Chad and Ms. Cockroft.
Thank you.
And Chad's...
I got to roll the toilet paper in the hall, just.
If you haven't met Chad's third grader, she's a unique young lady, if you ever watched the movie Remember the Titans, where the assistant coach's daughter was really telling them how to coach, I sat beside her at a basketball game, and I was very educated. The young girl has a lot of coaching quality there, and those athletes, they would be doing push-ups quite a bit, so, but she's a great young lady, and plus this younger daughter as well, so, but at this time, we're going to take about a five-minute break, and we'll come back at 11:30, so actually it'll be about seven minutes. All right, we'll come back to order now in graduation rates, Dr. Emily Weis-Coffe is going to bring us back home and take us out.
Okay.
All right.
Good morning.
That's to take us out to eat, by the way.
Oh, I don't know about that. Chairman Gammel, Board Members and Superintendent, it's my honor to present to you some updates on our graduation rate for 1718, so you should have in front of you the presentation, I hope, is that true? Great, and so I wanted to lead with a headline, I think it's important that we put this right out front, because it certainly is great news, and that's that we have graduated 250 more graduates in 2018, and so I think our graduation rate increased from 77.8 to 84.1 for the year 1718, and I think this is certainly something we're celebrating. Yay, right? Yes, right, yay, exactly, and I think one of the things to consider, I wanted to just sort of take us back a little bit about why is this so important, like, why is graduation rate kind of the end game for us in Lake County, and one of the reasons is your vision statement, so this was a vision statement developed by Lake County, and I think it's worth revisiting a little bit, it says in this vision statement that every student will graduate with the skills, it doesn't say that they may graduate, it doesn't say that we're going to provide opportunities, and if they want to take them, they will, it says, "We will graduate with skills to be successful in post-secondary or in the workplace," so we committed long ago to this idea that we are going to graduate students, not just educate students, I think it's important to note the difference, that we are here to graduate and to get people to be successful in a post-secondary opportunity as well as in the workplace, and I think that it's important for you to also understand that the Transformation Division and all of our departments take this work very seriously, and we understand that this is really, really what our job is, as far as the work that we do. And just to kind of go a little further, why it matters more now than before, is I thought you might just want to get some statistics out there, what we know is that most opportunities require a high school diploma now, even the military will only enter a certain amount of GED applicants, and so to really do anything, they need that high school diploma, and more importantly, we know that students who fail to graduate are three times more likely to be unemployed, and according to Breslin 2012, each high school dropout costs taxpayers $292,000 over their lifetime, so it's costly, it doesn't help our community, and it's just super important that we have a commitment to make sure that people can be successful once they leave our K-12 system. What we also know is, in the 20th century, illiterates were defined as students who couldn't read, and what we know now is that in the 21st century, illiterates are defined now as students who don't know how to learn, so I think that it's kind of taken a little bit different twist for us, and so one of our responsibilities as educators and as an educational system is to make sure that we teach students how to continue their learning after they leave us, and that's why I think our commitment to our vision statement, that we will give them the skills to succeed, is so important, you know, sometimes I hear educators say that their job is just to teach, but not to graduate, and I think it's, I think that's, it's all of it, right, like, we teach them the skills in order to be able to graduate, so I think that our, I would argue that our job is to ensure learning and to ensure that students know how to learn far beyond us, and I think if we don't do that, that we know that students who have not learned how to learn will be left behind in the American economy, and I think that that's really critical for us to keep in mind. When we think about the way that the graduation rate is determined, I want to review these, we talked about these last year, but just to make sure we're all on the same page, it's based on a four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate, so the cohort is the students that entered, for this particular graduation rate, it's for students who entered between 2014 and 2018 are considered in the cohort, the numerator includes students who earned a standard diploma, but does not include GED students, the denominator is all the students who are in the adjusted cohort for the graduation year, and remember that the graduation data lags by one year, so although it's January, we're talking about last year's graduation rate, so it's 201718 graduation rate. So when we talk about lagging, just so you kind of know where it fits, when we bring you our progress report, which we did in August, we already have one of the numbers, so while all of the other numbers we don't have yet, this is one number, this is one box we have filled in, so it kind of helps to see that this is the lagging data, so we know that our graduation rate already for our district report card is 84% for our next year's report card, does that make some sense?
So we don't, yeah.
1819's report card.
We include last year's data.
We include last year's data, and that, actually it'll come up in three spots, but I don't have the other two numbers yet.
Does it not go then back on last year's report card as a final picture of last year's achievement?
Nope, it's always one year behind, so while the other boxes here, like FSA, ELA, will all be May testing, okay, but there's three boxes that are last year's data, and that's the three on the far right, so it's graduation rate, and the two for acceleration, high school acceleration and middle school acceleration, those numbers we don't have yet.
Our choice, or is this the state's?
State's. Everything else is current for 1819, but those three boxes are 1718.
Okay.
Sometimes that's hard to keep straight, that's why I kind of put it this way, like we know a box is filled, and obviously, any box, that's, I know, that's pretty clear, right, any box over 62% is in that A status, and of course, that's what we're reaching for, so we're well on our way with our one box so far, right? So I thought it might be good to see a three-year overview of graduation rates, just so you can see kind of how we've looked since the change in administration, so there's a 2016, 2017, and 2018 look, you'll notice that, for the most part, we have lots of schools that are in the plus category, and so I just thought that was kind of a nice look. One of the things that I'm hoping for is that we outperform at the state average, and while we have not quite gotten there yet, we certainly are creeping up, and I will say that our increases, we're increasing at a higher percentage than the state is, so while we increased 6.3%, the state increased at 3.8, so I'm proud of that, that we at least are moving at a higher rate, I'm hoping that we see numbers that go above the state average would be my, would be one of my next short-term goals. But just to talk about the students that aren't included in the graduation rate comparison, you can see that we had less number of students receive a certificate of completion, less number of students that were retained in 12th grade, meaning they're doing that fifth year, and less number in the adult ed program, all three of those ideas that we have less number means that's a positive change, because that means more students actually received their high school diploma, and so that's good news, good news for our district. Last year, when I sat before you, I talked about the idea that the adult ed program, that there was a misconception that the adult ed students would be taken out of the cohort, and I told you that I would clear up that misconception, and as you can see, we are 50 students left, so I hope, less, so I hope that that misconception is cleared up, because those students do not count for us in terms of graduation, so these are students that have a different path, and we hope to see those numbers continue to decline, and more numbers on the high school graduate side. I do want you to note that we took a very, very conservative approach in terms of taking students out of the cohort, one of the pieces to that other slide, it uses the word adjusted cohort, so when students, you can imagine that over four years' time, we have students moving in and out of our district, right, but we have to account for every single student that moves in and out, and we have to know where they went, and then make sure that they entered another opportunity for graduation, another school, if they moved out of state, so we made sure that we had written documentation for every student that was, that left us, and so I feel good about the idea that we have a very conservative approach to that, and so sometimes our numbers, I think you'll see the numbers continue to rise as our schools get better at making sure that we know where all of our kids are, and that was one of the, one of the ways that we really worked on, things we worked on this year. No, certificates of completion are students that either don't have the GPA of a 2.0, or they didn't pass the FSA assessments or get a concordant score, so they could be four-year graduates, but they just didn't have, they don't have the GPA or the assessments passed, and so they receive a certificate of completion, they can go back and take the test if they choose to, yes, they can keep trying. Well, many of them choose not to be retained, they take the certificate of completion instead, and even if we retain them in 12th grade, they still do not count, they wouldn't, they still would not count as high school graduates. So all three of these categories actually hurts against us, yeah. It could, I mean, it kind of depends on, I think what we're finding is that every one of these students is very unique, and that we have to look at sort of where they're at on their path, and...
So can you help me understand students that transfer in and out of the district, and how they count in the adjusted cohort, so, you know, somebody starts with us in 9th grade, then they move to 11th grade, we try to track that they've left us, right, and then they're no longer part of our 9th grade cohort?
Then we take them out of our denominator.
Right, okay, so somebody comes...
If we know where they went.
And so then they go to another district, and maybe they didn't pass 10th grade ELA when they were with us, now that other district is on the hook for trying to get them passed on that, and that counts in their denominator?
If they're in Florida.
Okay, and then likewise, if a student comes to us senior year and is missing a whole bunch of requirements, they're now part of our denominator, and we've got to figure it out, is that right? So wherever you are on graduation day is where you count, even though 95% of your academic career was somewhere else, that's kind of strange, huh? Okay.
Yes.
Par for the course.
Yeah. So I thought it might be interesting, you know, as we get, as our graduation rate increases, I think it's one of the things that I think we're responsible for, is making sure that we're looking at every type of student and every subgroup that we have, and just sort of looking at how they're doing, I think, when we start to tailor our work and look for other ways that we can influence graduation rate, it's important that we look by subgroup, and so I thought it might be interesting just to take a moment to sort of look at how we're doing by subgroup, you can see that this first slide talks about the overall, and then breaks it down by ESE, Freeway's lunch rate, at-risk, and then ELL. And the next slide breaks it down even more, which I thought was a little bit interesting in that it breaks it down by male and female. Well, I mean, it might have been some, I mean, you pointed it out, Mr. Thies, Nana. So looking at our different, our black, Hispanic, and white populations, so I think that you'll see that we've got some work to do, you'll notice that our black male population is our lowest percent, at 73.1, you know, and it makes me think as a person who oversees sort of all of the parts of the teaching and learning division, it makes me think about things like discipline, I think when we showed you discipline record rates, I think you would see a correlation to that, and how much time they're spending out of school, and all of the work that we're doing with restorative practices, and trying to ensure that these students are not out of school for a long time, and getting them back in school, some of the correlation might be there, so some of the work that I would like for my team to do is to sort of look more into this, and sort of see what are some other supports that we can give to ensure that all of our students are graduating at a very high rate.
Sure.
I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on, going back to the general slide, there it is, how, why in 2016 to 2017 did Lake Virtual go up by 40, 30 points? Do you know? What happened?
So, hang on, tell me where you're at again? The three-year overview?
The three-year overview, yeah, Lake Virtual went from 63 to 91 in 2016 to 17, and then they went up another 4.5%.
So sometimes it depends on how many students they had graduate, you know what, I should know that, and I don't know, do you remember why? And I can remember, I know one of the strategies that we've used since is that we've opened up, like, Virtual up year-round, so we do have some people that are taking advantage of it, but part of it is the number of students that they had, and they ensured graduation, and I don't know, Francis, do you, do you remember? Katie, do you remember?
Sorry.
I have lots of help, so, and I don't mind asking.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So what strategies are we putting in place to bring up our children of, our lower children, our children of color, and our males?
So I think, so this is one of the first opportunities that I've had to look at at by subgroup, so, Dr. Burns, I think that's a place that we've got to look and spend some more time, I think overall, right now, we're working on strategies just to raise our rate completely, totally up, and so I just, I think this is something that my team's going to have to take a look at and do some more work with, you know, I think we've really got to look at attendance rates, and if there's, and I would go back to that idea of the common vision for instruction, you know, I still think we've got some work to do there, and to engage all students, and are we attracting students in the classroom to learning, and we've got some, we still have some work to do there, and I think you'll look at, are we really addressing needs of all types of students, whether of color or of different differences in learning, and so that's a place that I'd like to spend... And so that's a place that I'd like to spend some time looking, looking more deeply into, and then talking about what we can do for students. But I do think that it's going to come from that, looking at instruction. I will tell you that, looking at kind of what we're hap, what's happening district-wide, just sort of leading with that as well, you know, when we think about, I brought you some information in August about the retention rates. You know, I think sometimes that addresses that, as, too, when you talked about males, and there is some research that talks about the maturity level. You know, sometimes is, is a little, girls sometimes mature faster, and they get the idea of doing school faster. And so that may be a male-female thing. So when we look at, are we retaining more males? And I'd have to go back and kind of pull that data, but I wonder about that. You know, do we set them on kind of a not-so-great course when we are holding them back in kindergarten and first grade, and then all of a sudden, they're older? And we have that problem that I talked about in August, about that we're retaining, we're trying to stop that particular cycle of retaining kids so young, and then they're 16-years-old in 9th grade. Remember, I brought you that data. So those are some pieces. I think all of those factors contribute into this end game of graduation. And so as we continue to have discussion around that with principals, and we talk to schools almost monthly, and my team does a really great job of bringing numbers in front of the principals to say, "Do you know who these kids are? And what is your plan for kids who are struggling?" And it's a K-12 system. It's not a 9-12 system. And so that graduation is a responsibility, once they enter our doorstep in kindergarten, we need to be thinking about how are we ensuring that they are going to leave us with the skills to succeed in post-secondary in the workplace? And so that's a, that's part of the work that we do. I will tell you that other things that have gone on just in this year, I think that I do have, I cannot, not miss an opportunity to talk about the College and Career Readiness Department led by Frances Sellis. And I think that their department, you know, we committed to that a couple of years ago, and I think it was a little bit risky on, on your part to, to approve a whole new org chart that included this department, that was going to focus on those three boxes to the right, basically, your acceleration in high school and middle school, as well as graduation rate. And they take it extremely serious that this is their charge, that their charge is to work on accelerated opportunities for students, as well as ensuring graduation for all of our students. And like was mentioned earlier by Ms. Neal, talking about the idea that somebody's got a focus on it. You know, the superintendent set a charge for us. We are going to get it 90% graduation. And I will tell you, all of us in the division, as well as at the school level, and this College and Career Readiness Department, they've really put in some systems, and sort of been the boots on the ground, and the real driving force between getting this in place, getting a system in place that we can track students. And so we really do have this laser-like focus on each student's progress now, and knowing where they are, and what they're lacking, and what they need to graduate, and making sure that we're not missing anybody's path. And that's really due in part to their department's leadership, as well as that new graduation resource facilitator that you approved, the eight positions that are one at every high school. They all, it's interesting, because I had an opportunity to go out to each school, we were looking at graduation in the month of December, to sort of meet a lot of them and understand, they all work very differently, but yet they all have a system that really works for their school. And through partnerships with their administration, and just sitting down with the district administration, the school administration, these grad resource facilitators, school counselors, data clerks, making sure that we all know where every kid is on their path to success, as well as if they leave this, where do they go? Because that's really been a critical piece. And make sure that every kid is accounted for. I think it's been a real push that we've really worked on this year in particular. And, and the bottom line is, is that we did better. We, what we got, we might have got all of our systems in place, but we graduated 250 more kids. And so that is really, really good news for us. And so I just, I want to commend everybody at the school level, everybody at the district level, that really made this a priority. And I think the charge of the superintendent has said, "We're going to get there." And I fully believe that we'll get there. And so I just, I thank you for the opportunity to have kind of a new way of doing work. I think that it's been critical to our success to be able to be a little more innovative, and to think about how can we ensure success by thinking outside of the box. So I appreciate the opportunity and the time to be able to talk about it today, and I, I'm very hopeful, and to be back here next year to talk about how we've hopefully outperformed the state, and I'm really looking to get to 90%. So, any questions?
Well, there's certainly a lot, a lot to be excited about when you look at this. And, and I can think about recent years, and where we make a gain, and people would celebrate that, but the state made a bigger gain. So it's nice that that has flipped, where we have outpaced the state in our gain, which is, which is great work. You know, as I'm looking, I hate to dive too specifically, school by school, but I've seen some increase there at Leesburg High School. I know you all have some new administration there that had, was, was really working to change a culture. And it seems like we're seeing some initial gains there. You know, as I look at your subgroups also, I see the, the challenges there between the black males and the Hispanic males, once again, stands out at Leesburg. So I know we've got some resources in place, we're seeing some success from the graduation people. Is this the case where we, where that workload is, is too great for that single person? Do we need a second person there to, to continue that work, or to push it, or?
You know, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that's the case yet. I think that, I, I think that we've just got to continue to work with what, I, I probably would like to have more conversation with the, with those, with some schools that are seeing a, a lower rate, and with those, with the Hispanics and black males, in terms of, what are we doing, you know? And, and kind of, is there other supports that they need? You know, I always, I never want to paint a broad brush, they need another person, right? Maybe they just need a different look, a way to support somebody. I don't always think people are the answer. Sometimes it's the way we do business. But I do think that bringing these numbers, I'm, I'm pretty sure Mr. Randolph's probably aware of his subgroup information, but I'd love to have a conversation and sit down with some of those. But, I mean, let's first celebrate the fact that he was at 67.1 in DA status, and is now 75.5, right? So certainly, this will take him out of DA status, and that's always a great place to be. I think that he had some challenges coming in there in terms of graduation, and maybe a lot of misconceptions about what counts in terms of graduates. And there were a lot of fifth-year graduates there, and so I think that he's really worked to, to eliminate that idea that it's okay to take five years, that he's, that we're on a four-year graduation path, and really put that vision in front of his staff. So I think, I think that we'll continue to see his graduation rates climb.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this. And I, I think that the, the 12-year, 13-year focus on graduation is going to continue to yield us more and more, as we realize that when we hold back children in kindergarten, and then they get held back again in third grade because of the state law. And the more opportunities we can get to get those kids to fourth grade, from third grade, I think we're going to see this pay off over many, many years as we move. I mean, this may take time, but I think we're going to, as our feeder schools are moving towards, moving kids along, we're going to see more and more kids graduate, I think. So I'm, I'm excited. I'm really excited by this.
So Mr. Dodd, I want to go back, because I was looking at 2016 for Leesburg, so just so I'm quoted on record, they went from 67.1 to 71.6. Let me correct that. Still a huge, a nice gain for them, and so...
That's right. It is, it's a good game.
I think what's important to remember is what you said a few minutes ago about the correlation between behavior and discipline, out-of-school suspensions, and graduation rates. And so a district-wide improvement strategy that we're excited to launch next year will be that alternative program at each school, in lieu of out-of-school suspension, keeping kids in school, that you're not going to go home. If you don't misbehave, you're still going to stay close, because we're going to address the behavior and provide academic support alongside of that. And so I think that that's, you know, again, thank you, Lake, for approving this referendum, because that's what it's going to do for our kids in the coming year, and I think it will be hugely impactful on not only academic performance overall, but, you know, our mental health crisis, and all the things that this program will help to focus on.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four is board comments. Mr. Mathias?
Only a couple, as we, as we are leaving our holiday spirit and moving into full war 2019. At this very first presentation, it's just, it is, I don't know, exciting to be excited by the administrators that came forward today, and we see why we're making the great progress because of you guys. So very well done. And that's all I've got, because my wife got a new cat, and it's like a new baby. So it starts me out on at 3:00, and so I'm getting tired.
You just wanted to get on the love fest.
That's it.
That's all that was. Dr. Weiskopf, I don't know if I even mentioned that you have come to some of our Lake County Knights programs as well. So it's not just, and that's why I said Mr. Farnsworth's name as well, because he is going to come this semester also. So it is definitely not limited to the program specialist staff, so. And I wanted to say I appreciated the work of the Medicaid, and that the conversations that are going to come as a result of those dollars. So I've gotten a couple of different inquiries about those types of things. It's good to know that we're all right on it. So, thank you.
You know, as, as you, as you move out of the holidays into the new year, there's a lot to be excited about, and I, I don't know if, well, I, I'm, no, I'm not going to say the deck was stacked here, and the presentations don't only give us the good stuff, because there's good stuff happening all over the place. But it's great when you can look at a very optimistic presentation that looks at finances, and then something completely on the other end of the spectrum, looking at academic results. So that shows you the, the vast work of the district in a whole bunch of different areas. And, and I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm getting excited about this, all the literacy days coming up. I've seen a number of invitations to go read at schools, and that's one of my favorite things to do, so I'm excited about getting out there and doing that. And we've seen the save the date for the Steam Bowl and the Science Fair. It's, it's hard to believe that all that stuff is already coming upon us and approaching so quickly. This, this time of year just seems to be so much of a blur with so many things happening so quickly. But it's going to be a great opportunity for, for our students to participate in many of those events. Thanks.
I just want to, the only thing I have is, I think it was glossed over, that high school dropouts are 63 times more likely to be incarcerated. I love that statistic, because it's, it's really a matter of pay now or pay later. And I really do appreciate the referendum dollars that we can put towards paying now, so that we can get more and more of these kids graduated. I'm just, I'm over the moon by these numbers that we're seeing, so I'm pretty excited. Thank you for everyone who's doing the work on the ground.
Yeah, and I just want to say also, thank you for all the presentations today, and bringing us up to date on this. And it, it's good news. You know, you take bad news as well, but this is good news, we're going in the right direction. My last comment that I'd like to say is, when you have a chance to, to say a moment of prayer, the media specialist from Eustace High School, which is also the baseball coach, David Lee, is in special need. He's at Shands Hospital. I was there Friday at the baseball field when they had a prayer vigil for him on his behalf. And there was, what was overwhelming to me was, there was a lot of parents there, parents that had kids that had already graduated, were in college. Also, what was outstanding was, there was ballplayers from Umatilla, as well as Taverries that was there. And so to me, that, that was outstanding. But he's in special need of prayer. They are trying to do things to try to help his wife, Tina, to be able to make sure that she's able to stay with him as much as she can. And, but everything is looking good, as long as he can get healthy, everything will work out okay. But just keep him in prayer, David Lee. That's all I have.
Mr. Farnsworth mentioned that, how important it is getting close to the teachers, and he mentioned that we're getting ready to start our next round of teacher focus groups. So Dr. Weiskopf and I will hit the road. This Wednesday will be our first one. We have 10 scheduled over the next several weeks, and so we're looking forward to, of talking with teachers and finding out how we can best support them. And then, as we've done in the past, when we're done with that, we collect a lot of information and bring it back to you all to say, "Here's what, here's what we're hearing from teachers." So I encourage them to come. We've set the calendar out, and we'll send, send some reminders, and we hope to get good attendance and good feedback, and I'm sure we will. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I had several things, but it's too cold to feel my fingers. I just assumed, wait, and talk about them later.
Under warmer conditions, huh? All right, then we'll consider ourselves adjourned, then. Thank you.